I want to call to order the March 25, 2014, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome those of you who are here tonight. We have a great crowd here tonight. That's wonderful. I also want to welcome those who might be watching us on Channel 10, those who might be watching on their computers, those who might be listening on their computers, and those who might be listening to us on their radios. This is your city government. We do want you to participate in it in any way you can. So it's great to have the crowd here, and I know we've got a number of people that are watching. That's wonderful. Okay, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Tower.
Here.
Present seven.
Okay, now we'll have the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Fitzgerald will handle the invocation tonight. We have a number of students with us who'll help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the mayor said, we have a lot of students here tonight, and we're kind of teaming it tonight. The mayor is still coming back from his surgery, so why don't the kids stand up for us, please? Face the audience. And as we talked about, we're going to ask them what's their name, what school they went to, and why are you looking forward to spring break? I think we all are, so we'll start with that. All right?
My name is John, and I'm from Jacob Shapiro, and I'm looking forward to spring break because there will hopefully be no snow.
My name is Bowden, and I'm looking forward to spring break because we can go outside without getting our clothes all wet.
My name is Lucas, and I go to Oakwood School, and I'm looking for a spring break because it's too cold outside.
My name is Tyra Asmussen, and I go to Oakwood Elementary, and I can't wait for spring break so I can go to Washington D.C. with my family.
My name is Kiara Asmussen, and I go to Oakwood, and I'm looking forward to the days to get warmer.
My name is Trista, and I go to Oakwood, and I'm looking forward to go play outside.
We all wish we could go play, right? Why don't we give the kids a round of applause? And we have a certificate of appreciation, and they're more than welcome to head out after they get it. Thank you. Try to get them in order when they get them all in order. You're more than welcome to go.
I do want to thank the students for coming down tonight, their parents for bringing them down tonight. Sounds like they speak for all of us this time, when I don't think it's so much spring break they're looking forward to as spring like the rest of us. So I think it's number one, spring, and number two, spring break. So that's great. Looks like it may actually be beginning to become. Okay, the next item on the agenda is I have a proclamation which I'd like to read, and again Deputy Mayor Herman's going to help me out with the proclamation here. Proclamation, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, and whereas national service participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, including 35 in Oshkosh, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our city's economic and social well-being, and whereas more than 572 national service participants of all ages and backgrounds serve in Oshkosh, providing vital support to city residents and improving the quality of life in our city, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, including more than 404,000 in Oshkosh, and whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 1, 2014. Now therefore, I, Bert Tower, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim April 1, 2014, as Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, and thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. So, thank you, and also I'm going to ask Dorothy Wilder to come on up, accept this proclamation.
Dory works for Habitat for Humanity, and I've worked with her on many volunteer opportunities, and she was the volunteer coordinator for the Police Department before she went over to Habitat, so she definitely knows the value of volunteers.
Thank you. On behalf of the other host sites in our community, which includes the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Vet Corps, Advocap Retired Senior Volunteer Corps, Winnebago County Health Department Health Corps, and Habitat for Humanity AmeriCorps Vista, I'm accepting this proclamation. We'll share it with them.
A round of applause.
Thanks, Dory. Thanks for accepting it. Thanks for all you do in the community, and thanks, Steve, for helping me out tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is citizen statements to the council. This is the opportunity of citizens to come forward and express maybe a concern they might have about something that's going on in the city, or provide you with an opportunity to maybe say something good about the city, something positive that you've happened to notice. If you do want to come forward, the microphone is open up here. I would ask you to come up, give us your name, give us your address, speak for no more than five minutes, direct your comments to the council, no electioneering, and speak to nothing else on the agenda at this particular point in time. Would anybody like to come forward at this point?
Bob Cornell, 548 West Smith. Fortunately, I have nothing but positive news for everyone this evening, starting with some of the things that have happened at the senior center. I know at least one of you attended our St. Patrick's Day dinner, and I have a confession to make because I've been harassed ever since because I was not there due to another commitment, but it was a great evening. The plan was to feed 80 people. 120 people were fed, and people were turned away at the door. So for a first-time event, it's pretty exciting for the staff to prepare something like that and get that good of a response. This Saturday, if you're available, the facility is being used by the Memorabilia Club from 9:00 to 2:00. A lot of things of interest there if you're interested in memorabilia, so take that in. And of course, we can't forget on April 12th is Breakfast with a Bunny, and Mr. Roloff can sleep well tonight because we already have found a bunny. So that's from 8:00 to 11:30, and we hope everybody grabs the kids, the grandkids, and come on down. We're going to have a great time. On another issue that I brought up two weeks ago relative to the parking of disabled and handicap parking around the Grand and the High Street, the High Avenue parking lot, that was on a Tuesday. On Thursday, Mark Huddelson called me, and I found out from Mr. Roloff that he's doing sort of interim jobs in different areas of that particular situation, and he told me that he is convening the Utility Parking Commission in April, and asked me if I'd be willing to attend again, and he had some thoughts and ideas, which he said he would send me the agenda and all the particular information. And so that looks very positive because it was sort of a letdown when the last plan fell through, and I told him I'd be very happy to attend, providing our Board of Appeals doesn't run over because we meet at 3:30, and this commission meets at 4:00. So everything is going positive, and so I almost hate to say that because when you do say that, something falls apart. But keep us in mind because we're doing in collaboration, a partnership with the Parks Department for the Easter with a Bunny, and hope you see there with all the kids and grandkids.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to come forward at this time? If not, that takes us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of a number of items that the administration feels are non-controversial in nature. As such, they're packaged together for passage by the council as a total package. If anybody, either a citizen or a council member, wants to remove an item from the consent agenda, they may ask, and we will go ahead and remove that item from the consent agenda for separate consideration. The way I'll do this is I'm going to read through the whole consent agenda. If you'd like to comment on an item on the consent agenda, I would ask that you come up to the microphone up here where Mr. Cornell was before. Microphone is open, and provide us with your comments. Once I've gone through the consent agenda for the citizens, I'll bring it back to the council for some discussion, and then finally for a vote regarding the consent agenda. Okay, I'll get started. Approval of bills presented by the Finance Director. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from March 11, 2014. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from February 6, 2014. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company. There are a number here. Robert and Susan Ackerman for alleged damages from a sewer backup. Willie Countryman for alleged injuries from a fall involving a city bus. Mike Palmer for alleged damages from a sewer backup. Peninsula Properties for alleged damages from a sewer backup. Timothy Pishke for alleged damages from a frozen lateral. Okay, Resolution 14-17, accept donation from the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation and approve cooperative purchase of mobile command vehicle for the Oshkosh Police Department. The total cost is $268,015. A donation from the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation of $162,015. Resolution 14-118, award bid for zero-turn riding lawnmower for Lake Shore Municipal Golf Course, J.W. Turf, Inc. Resolution 14-119, award bid for various road materials for 2014 for the street division to Northeast Asphalt, Inc., Carru Concrete and Michaels Materials. Resolution 14-120, award bid for Public Works Contract Number 14-05 to the Groot, Inc., for various concrete paving and utility projects, central city area. Resolution 14-121, approve professional services agreement with Strand Associates for Engineering Design Services for Aviation Business Park. Excuse me. Yes.
Good morning. Oh, I'm sorry. Good afternoon. Good evening, whatever it is.
Which item would you like to speak to?
Resolution 121. My name is Gary Gray. My address is 815 West Lenwood. This resolution is regards to hiring a company to do a design study, I believe, for infrastructure of a Tiff district, and I was just wondering if there would be specific designs requirements if this district is going to be focused on a certain particular industry as of the aviation industry, and there is another resolution later in the agenda that the city is going to be hiring a company to do a study to see if they can, or to develop a marketing plan to promote the aviation cluster development. And I'm just wondering if this is a little bit premature, if the design is structured that would be inconsistent to the aviation business. Thank you.
Okay, and just to answer quickly there, it is going to focus on aviation. That's the full intent. That's where we intend to go with it, and that's what we plan to stick with. All the parties involved agree to that upfront, so that's where we are. I don't know if Mr. Davis would like to add anything, or anybody else would, but that is the intent, to develop that industry here in the city of Oshkosh on that particular property.
Yes, and in this particular case, this was partially funded by EDA, and EDA has a certain timeline for us to actually expend the funds. So to even stay on schedule, we have to get the engineer hired so they can draw the design up so that we can get the permits and start construction later this year. That's per the EDA grant agreement that we have with them.
So the focus will indeed be aviation, and we need to move forward to take full advantage of a rather significant grant that we have.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would also point out that we have not yet subdivided this parcel, other than that we have one half of the parcel. One half of the park is owned by the county, which we'll have through the fence agreements. The east side of the property is owned by the city. We haven't subdivided it for specific needs for a specific industry, so if somebody came and said, "I need 12 acres," we would subdivide it to meet that 12-acre need. If they needed 15, we would subsequently do it that way. It would really depend on what would happen down the road, so I think we're keeping our flexibility open for that type of instance.
Thank you. Okay, Resolution 14-122, amend initial resolution Number 14-66 for special assessments, contract Number 14-05, paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, second local street concrete paving program, central city area. Resolution 14-123, approve and submit Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources 2013 Stormwater Program Annual Report. Resolution 14-124, amend acceptance of Economic Development Administration, EDA, Public Works Grant Award to Include Condition Related to Adjoining Property Aviation Business Park. Resolution 14-125, approval of special event, and I'm going to be reading a number of special events, but I won't say special event each time from here on down for the most part. Canada Promotions to Utilize Sunnyview Exposition Center for Their Mexican Dance, March 29, 2014. Resolution 14-126, Oshkosh JC's to Utilize Menominee Park for Their Oshkosh JC's Annual Easter Egg Hunt, April 19, 2014. Resolution 14-127, Runaway Events to Utilize Menominee Park and City Streets for Their Runaway to the Bay, April 26, 2014. Resolution 14-128, Oshkosh Bird Fest Committee to Utilize Menominee Park for Their Oshkosh Bird Fest, May 3, 2014. Resolution 14-129, Approval of Kelly's Bar to Hold Their Graduation Beer Garden, May 16 and 17, 2014. Resolution 14-130, Oshkosh Fine Arts Association to Utilize South Park for Winnebago Art Fair, June 8, 2014. Resolution 14-131, Waterfest, Inc. to Utilize Leech Amphitheater for Their Waterfest Concert Series, June 19 and 26, 2014, July 17, '24, '25, and '26, 2014, and August 21, '22, 2014. Resolution 14-132, Wisconsin Alliance of Bass Tournament Anglers to Utilize Rainbow Park for the Wisconsin Alliance of Bass Tournament Anglers Oshkosh Qualifier, July 12 and 13, 2014. Resolution 14-133, Winnebago Fair Association to Utilize Sunnyview Exposition Center for Their Winnebago County Fair, August 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, 2014. Resolution 14-134, Great Lakes Timber Professionals Association to Utilize EAA Grounds for Their Great Lakes Logging and Heavy Equipment Expo, September 5 and 6, 2014. Resolution 14-135, Disallowance of Claim by Leesel Storm. Resolution 14-136, Approve Special Class B Licenses, Operator Licenses, and Taxi Cab Driver License. That is the consent agenda. Anybody else who wanted to come forward to speak to one of the items who may have missed it while I read over it? See no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for any comments or questions or any identification of items they would like removed from the consent agenda. Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question on Resolution 14-124. Could either Mr. Davis, Mr. Roloff, explain to the citizens what that is saying?
I can take it. The development grant that we were awarded had a condition on it that the private properties adjoining to, basically, they don't want a private property profiting from the grant. So for a certain period of time, they want an agreement from the adjoining properties that they will not sell their properties for above the pre-project fair market value. In this case, the adjoining property owner was not willing to enter into that agreement, so we contacted the EDA and talked to them and said, you know, we aren't able to comply with this condition. And as a compromise to meet the same purpose, that it won't be used for private profit during that same period of time, we would agree that we're not going to annex that property, and in order for the property to be sold at a higher rate, essentially, we would have to provide services to it, sewer and water, and to allow it to be developed and sold. We won't do that for a four-year period. If we do, we would have to repay that grant. But as it stands right now, we have no plans to develop within that time period. It's not included in the five-year CIP, and it is something the city does have control over because all of that would require annexation, and so it is within the council's control.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other things on the consent agenda? Any comments or questions?
Yep. Come on. Resolution 14-117, I'd like to have Chief Broyle come up, and I think Diane Abraham's back there, President CEO of the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, come forward. I'd like to just have them go ahead and give us the details again, and we've heard it, but I think the community needs to hear it about our, looks like, purchase of a mobile command post, just how it came about, the public-private partnership, and what the community can still do to help the Police Department.
Yeah, we are still actively involved in the fundraising, and I thank the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation for what they've done so far, and will continue to do, but we identified a need in our daily operations and have proposed a multipurpose vehicle, one to be used as a incident command vehicle on critical incidents. It's imperative that we be able to communicate properly on the scene of any critical incident or natural disaster. Secondly, as kind of an operational hub for all of our special events. Again, the success of any special event means that we need to be able to communicate with all the players involved, and this would serve as an operational hub for some of the more major events that we have. The third and probably most exciting is our community outreach part of it, kind of twofold. One is to have a more sustained kind of long-term presence in problem neighborhoods, drug houses, those kinds of things. It's kind of a mobile substation. And then to, and this is the innovative part of it, is to deliver some of our programming and outreach services into the community, such as reading to kids, or meeting with neighbors to identify problems, coffee with a cop, all these kinds of things that are police-community relations-building efforts.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, I have to say from the foundation standpoint, we are really, really excited to partner with you, and we have had a great run with our initial fundraising efforts, and we are very excited that we think we will still fundraise, but we're getting very close, and we think this is a great project for many reasons that the chief already said. So we're looking forward to having this mobile unit on the road by June. So keep in mind, we'll be still soliciting funds for this great project, and like chief said, that this does meet a lot of the needs that our donors are looking at, our neighborhood outreach programs, our Vent City, and our safety issues. So we are very, very excited, and we're really, really fortunate to have donors that are willing to support this. So I want to say thank you for bringing this need to our attention, and we are very glad to partner with you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just make a couple of quick comments here about this. Thank the chief for getting involved in the project. I know you've been looking at this for quite a while, so we're thankful for you to bringing this forward and pushing on it. The council was very supportive of the idea, the concept, but when it came to budget time, we felt there's only a certain amount of money we could put towards it, so the city is putting a certain amount of money towards it. We actually be putting our last budget, 104,000, 106,000, something in that vicinity, something over 100,000, which was less than was required at that time. Then the foundation, to the credit, under Diane's leadership, or her board's leadership, and her staff's work, which we very much appreciate, stepped up to the table and has raised over 160,000 thus far, and is still looking at raising some more money. That's sizable money. I think this is important as a public-private partnership here, here within the community. I think we have a healthy community, one that's looking to moving forward. We know that the tax dollars to move us forward are not always there at the level which we'd like, so we really need private sector help, and this is an example, just one more example. We could go down a litany of examples the last few years, so thanks, and thanks for the partnership. We look forward to the vehicle being out on the road. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, other items on items on the consent agenda. Mr. Herman?
Yes, I'd like to pull Resolution 14-131, approval of special events, Waterfest. There's a conflict on, coupled the dates with an event that we've already approved.
Okay, that's pulled. Other comments on, anything else other people want told, or any comments or questions on any items?
I just had a question about Resolution 14-129, Kelly's Bar to Hold Their Graduation Beer Garden. This year, they had included in here the amplified music till midnight instead of 11:00 PM. Do we have any indication as to why they chose to ask for extra compared to what they asked for in previous years?
I know we discussed it at the special event meeting. I know that they did have, it was, went through last year. It's not been an issue from the Police Department, was the indication at the meeting, and so they didn't have an issue of extending it to midnight.
Okay. Yeah, that was ditto, basically. They did have it last year, they extended it to midnight. We had no problems with that extension, no problems experienced during the event, and I think most of the participants live in that general area, and we didn't receive any complaints.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council, and I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 14-131.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the consent agenda minus 14-131? Same none. I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on the consent agenda minus 14-131.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, that takes us to items removed from the consent agenda. There was one item removed from the consent agenda. That item was 14-131. I will read it again. It's Resolution 14-131, approval of special event, Waterfest, Inc. to Utilize Leech Amphitheater for Their Waterfest Concert Series, June 19 and 26, 2014, July 17, '24, '25, and '26, 2014, and August 21 and 22, 2014. I would ask for a motion and a second on Resolution 14-131.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. It's up for discussion. Mr. Herman, you were the one that wanted to remove, so it's your turn to talk.
Thank you, Mayor. I received a phone call from City Attorney Lawrence about conflict. On Friday, August 22nd, we have Main Street closed for the Gus Mackr 3-on-3 basketball tournament, which will be closed Friday, Saturday, and I believe Sunday, Main Street, which will cause some parking issues. I don't know exactly without pulling their permit how late in the day that basketball tournament goes, but with an event at the Leech, I just don't know that we're going to have parking if there's an event at the convention center that day, if the hotel's got something going on that day, and Beckett's has got something going on that day. I just think we're going to have issues that the Police Department is going to have to address, and a whole bunch of things.
I can report, thank you for, you mentioned to me yesterday that you had some concerns, and so I did follow up, and staff had brought to my attention that Mr. Shutter from the hotel had expressed some concerns. Mr. Shutter was gone this week. I brought it to the attention of Mike Dempsey, who takes the lead on the Waterfest Concert Series, but was not involved in the application for the event, the chamber. Mr. Casper did that. Mr. Casper's out of town this week. Fortunately, Mr. Dempsey got in touch with me after I brought it to his attention, and he recognizes that the parking- he recognizes that the parking lot, that the convention center and hotel, for lack of a better term, has dibs over Waterfest for this. He acknowledged that they haven't worked out those details yet. I also spoke with Mr. Batley. Mr. Batley got back with me. It sounded like Mr. Dempsey had talked to him. And Mr. Batley was very practical about it. First off, he points out that with our agreement with the convention center, they do have legal dibs on the use of the parking lot. But logistically, that's going to have to be worked out. Mr. Batley was also very understanding, and as you may have seen in the paper, the Waterfest series has already announced who their artists are, and the dates and all that. And he recognizes that they've probably already gotten these contracts, which tells us, based on our previous discussion about special events, that they should have been applying for these before they got the headliners lined up. But that's being what that is. Mr. Batley understands that. He recognizes that he will have to play his card of, we have dibs on the parking lot, because that has to be first and foremost our priority with them. And he's explained to Mr. Dempsey that there are parking lots that they will flat out not be able to use. Currently, Waterfest on a Thursday night uses the Riverside Park lot for VIP parking, and that's been approved in the past, not a problem. On a Friday and Saturday, whole different dynamic. There are some weddings, receptions planned at the hotel and the convention center and Beckett's. So Mr. Batley also recognizes that the city center parking structure, not the one that we manage for the hotel, but the office complex, is going to have to be factored in with that. There's a lot of logistics that need to be worked out. Mr. Batley feels comfortable that they will be able to work through them, and he can always play his card that he does have dibs on it. So he didn't want to hold up the approval of the permit, even though he acknowledges that maybe it probably should have been worked out before it even got to the special event committee, because once staff has it, we're asking that they've worked this out, and there was some indication that it had been worked out. Mr. Batley said, no, it hasn't been worked out just yet, but we'll work with them. So I know that's not, Mr. Batley has been very understanding, and I think he'll work through it. And we'll have to work with them, because the parking lots, we have to make sure logistically that people are not able to use those lots, not just for VIP purposes, but they're not going to be able to use them for Waterfest, because they're going to need to reserve it for the weddings and wedding receptions that are being held there. So logistically, we're going to have some issues, but we have a few months to work those things out.
My question now, because I know it's Lawrence was talking about conceivably laying this over. Is it the staff's view at this particular moment in time that we should lay this approval over, or would you prefer to go ahead?
It'd be my recommendation that this permit be granted with the understanding that there is no assurance of available parking that will be reserved for Waterfest for any of the Friday or Saturday dates. That would be my recommendation to the council. And then it puts them on notice that they don't have that, as they have for Thursday events, which have previously been just fine. That would be my recommendation to council.
Okay, well, the one comment I make is, we're beginning to find out that as we get more successful with events and with the hotel and the riverfront, we have some issues that are going to arise, and clearly, parking is one of those issues. Also, while we control some of the special events, we don't necessarily control the scheduling, and we might have to coordinate our scheduling with special events as we make our special events calendar that we have talked about generating to put in events that are going to be located at the hotel and at Beckett's and places like that, too. So I hope as we move forward, we can do that. Mr. Peck?
I would direct this to Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Roloff's comment about the notice of use of the, excuse me, the public, or of the parking structure, would that be best to do via an amendment to this resolution? And if so, how would we want to word that? I would think that that would be the best way of handling it.
I don't think you actually need to, because what you're proving is use of the amphitheater here. They would have to go through a separate process, and I think they have with the transportation department before for an agreement with the parking lots. And I'm looking at you because I'm not 100% sure on that.
Chris, where's Chris? Yeah, Chris Strong normally dealt with that, with the parking utility.
So they had typically gone through that separate process. This only approves use of the Leach amphitheater, which doesn't include those parking lots anyway. So I don't think you need to amend this, and it has been communicated in writing to both parties, everybody at this point. So I think we're okay with how it's written.
So you're okay even?
Mr. Peck, any?
I'll take the city attorney's lead on it. She thinks we're covered. I just, I think it's out there, and we're certainly going to make sure it's clear to Waterfest that they need to cede any use of the parking lots immediately next to the convention center. They have to make those available to the convention center use.
And just, Ms. Lawrence, you said there is some documentation, or there has been some written communications?
Yes.
Could we, as the council, get a copy of that as part of our Friday packets? Just for our records and our reference, I mean, as long as there has been communication and people are on notice, I can live with this.
Yep.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. I don't know if it's City Attorney Lawrence's answer or Mr. Roloff's. Do we have a, the city owns the Leech, the city owns the convention center. Do we have any legal obligation to provide parking for one or the other, or both?
We have, in our agreement with, for operation of the convention center, there is the legal dibs clause. There is a paragraph in that that does give the operators of the convention center first right for the parking lots to the, I'm directionally challenged, I'm in the east, and kind of northeast, those two lots. And that is specifically in that agreement.
Okay, so the lot across the street, basically, to the north would be?
By the fire station.
Next to the fire station is not tied to the convention center?
That is one of the ones that is tied.
That one and Riverside Park are.
Both.
So basically, there is no parking lot availability through the Leech, as long as the convention center holds there.
If they have conflicts, and what Mr. Batley and I talked about was, it's not as simple as just saying they have dibs. Logistically, they're going to have to make sure that they essentially have parking attendants, so that if you're there for the concert series versus a wedding reception, and I think they're going to have a pretty good idea who's going to be a concert goer versus a wedding goer, although I've been to some weddings, you never know. But I think they're, logistically, they're going to have to work through that issue. Mr. Batley knows that, and he spoke with Mr. Dempsey that, you know, we need to have that assured for our guests. And Mr. Batley is very guest-oriented, and he will be a strong advocate for his guests. And I think they're going to need parking attendants, and then that's going to have to be worked out with them, because we can't just say, well, we'll put up a sign saying, wedding parking only, because you know that won't work. It's going to have to be a little more, I don't want to use the word "policed," but it's going to have to be policed to a certain extent.
And I guess it goes even a little further. I mean, we are talking about the Leech and the convention center and that, but there's a lot of other businesses that are right in that general area that it's going to be open for business, too. And so their customers are going to be inconvenienced. Cranky Pats, for example, is right in that general area. There's a few other establishments up in the next block, and even on the other side of the river. You know, you have Brooklyn and others. That whole area is going to be impacted, because we also lose the parking on Main Street with the Gus Macker tournament. So I think we need to somewhere, and I know our parking study kind of didn't get there financially, we weren't able to do that, but we, with a new transportation director coming in, I, we really are going to have to seriously look in that area, whether it's reconditioning some land that we own to make temporary parking, or overflow parking, or work with maybe some other private lots in the general area. But if we're going to continue to grow this area, people are not going to want to drive, you know, walk five, six, seven, eight blocks to get to an event.
Just, I don't disagree with you, and you've had that conversation with me a number of times, so noted. Thank you, Mr. Herman. The, with far as Gus Macker, pretty much Gus Macker's going to be over by five those days. So fortunately, that shouldn't be an issue. But there will be some crossover, because people are leaving Gus Macker or going out for dinner after the tournament. There will be some logistical issues there that we'll have to work through.
Now, that being said, if someone parked in that lot for that Gus Macker and went out to eat, or are we going to, how are we going to?
They're going to be okay, because
Timeline?
It's going to be virtually impossible to.
Right.
Once they're in, they're in. So if somebody goes out to eat after Gus Macker, or let's say they go to, they decide to go to the Leech, that's going to be awfully hard for us to police that.
Right.
But for the most part, I think after 5:00, the Gus Macker tournament pretty much disperses. Handfuls stay downtown to continue the evening. I'm guessing those folks won't be going to the wedding, but they could stay for Waterfest.
Right.
We're not going to be able to police it to that degree.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
I will say that this is, while we're having this discussion now, is encouraging that we're having the discussion in April and not three days before these events in August. So I think this is another reason to continue our work with our special events policy, because we're having this conversation months in advance. So these logistical items that we don't have the answers to yet, we can get all these parties in the same room and start to hash out these things, so that when August 22 comes around, we don't have a mass chaos, we have organized chaos, for lack of a better term. But this is another opportunity for us to continue to develop our public and private partnerships, to disseminate information, to work with these organizations, possibly even working with some local media, to make sure that the community at large is notified about these things well in advance, so that we don't have, we can minimize the number of phone calls that staff will get, or we as counselors will get, saying, I didn't know about this. So knowing about these issues and possibilities four months in advance allows us to plan a little bit better and have a coordinated approach to this. So that's my two cents worth.
Any other comments? Salis Nosby?
Thank you. There's a couple comments I have in regards to this, and I will, I did try to reach out to Mr. Roloff a couple times today, and it's okay. It's, however, you know, I will dis, I will, I'm going to take a different stance on this. And it's probably because I have somewhat of a hangover from last year in regards to having multiple events in the downtown, having streets closed off, and not having it thoroughly thought out. And we not only had a number of calls during that timeframe, but then we had a number of issues that came in consistently within a week to two weeks after that. I highly support Waterfest, I love having it here. However, if we are looking to not lay this over, and we're looking to approve this tonight, I see it as a logistical nightmare. For one thing, I think, especially with the significance of it, I would like to see an exact plan of how it's going to be handled, not a we'll take care of it later, and then present itself after we've already approved it. I would like to know, being that it has not been well thought out of what an exact plan is, does it impact police? Does it impact fire? Does it impact a number of routes within the city? So from my standpoint, a we'll fix it later, I don't think is appropriate, given the challenges that we had last year. Again, this has nothing to do specifically with Waterfest. However, I would anticipate that, being that they are really, truly a neighbor to a number of other organizations within the downtown that are having events, I would have hoped that they would have ironed these things out before it would have come to us. That's part of the special events process, is that when this comes to us, all of the details are ironed out. That was, that was the focus of why we had special events. We went through the process, and we redid it. So if you guys are looking to pass it this evening, I will not be supporting it.
Other comments?
I'll just make one, and I'm just remembering back to last year, when Gus Macker occurred, it was the same weekend as Irish Fest, and Saturday in particular is the busiest day of Irish Fest. There's about 6,000, 7,000 people that came down that day. There was also two weddings that happened that weekend at the hotel, one on Friday evening and one Saturday evening. And I know, I know some of the counselors received some phone calls. I didn't, and I don't know that there was, I guess I'm comparing that event to what these Friday or Saturday nights would be like, and I think it would be relatively similar. I guess I don't remember problems that had occurred, or hadn't heard about any problems that occurred. But I guess, I'm, I don't, I guess I'm not as uncomfortable with this as the rest of you seem to be.
Yes.
Noting the challenges of the package as a whole, I'm going to move to amend Resolution 14-131, removing August 21 and 22 as Resolution 14-31A. And a secondary motion, 14-131B, would be to lay over approval of
Can you do, can you do them in two separate, can we divide the issue as one motion, and then vote on each separately?
Right.
For Pam's minutes?
That's what I'm, what I'm trying to do with A and B, is create two separate motions. Do you want to vote on the first one first, and then?
Vote to divide them first?
Okay.
And then vote on each one separately?
So the amendment right now is 14-31A, remove August 21 and 22 from the current standing resolution of Waterfest Incorporated to use the Leach Amphitheater for their Waterfest concert series. So 14-131 will read, Waterfest Incorporated to utilize the Leach Amphitheater for their Waterfest Concert Series, June 19 and 26, 2014, July 17, 24, 25, and 26, 2014. And then the amendment would, or the, to remove would be 14-131A, Waterfest Incorporated to utilize the Leach Amphitheater for their Waterfest Concert Series, August 21 and 22, 2014.
Will that satisfy what it is that you have in mind? The first one, basically?
Now they're just dividing it. Right, yeah.
Is that okay? How do you want to state it? Do you understand the way the two pieces are at this?
Yes.
So the first motion essentially?
Is everything but the 21st and 22nd?
22nd.
And B is the 21st and 22nd?
Correct. That is my intent.
Okay, just, okay, just one second. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay. Discussion, Ms. Salis Nosby?
The only question that I have is, July 26 falls on a Saturday. Do we know what all the special events are for a Saturday in July? That's the only, that was the other question that I had. And again, going back to checking with Beckett's, the convention center, and the hotel, you know, in regards to what's already on their itinerary. And to be honest, again, this is why I've asked a number of times for a calendar, so that we can see each and every council meeting regarding special events, is what all do we have, and do we have anything else? So my only possible would be to add the 26th on to August 21 and 22 until we have more information.
The calendar actually is online now on
It is.
The city's website, but we wouldn't show private weddings at the Beckett's or the hotel or those things on there, but we would show approved special events on it.
Right. Because in going back, we have a number of taxpayer dollars that are in the convention center and the hotel. I would hope that those, those events would have some type of priority.
Let me ask, let me ask a question, then. Are you going to move to amend the amendment by throwing in the 26? Is that what you're, I need to see what you're doing here, because we need to carry through with this process.
I understand that, Mayor. I'm just, I'm asking the question of, I didn't know if Mr. Clark, you know, was aware that the 26th was a Saturday, and if he wanted to add that to those dates as well or not.
I think for the purpose of this, I think the 21st and 22nd is sufficient, particularly with the size of the events that are happening on that, and the fact that we have already approved an event that's going to be utilizing the areas that could be affected by this special event. So at this time, I'm comfortable with just August 21 and 22 being removed and voted on separately, and leaving the rest of the resolution intact.
Which is essentially the way the amendment stands at this time.
All right.
Okay. Are we clear then? Okay, so we're voting to remove essentially the 21st and 22nd from the existing 14-131. That would be the first motion. Any other comments on that? So right now, we're only talking about removing two dates from the motion. That's the motion that's current, right here. That's the one that's on the table. We all comfortable with that? Okay, I'll ask Clark to take the roll call vote.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Tower?
No.
Carried 6'1".
Okay, so we've seen the removal of the 21st and the 22nd from 14-131, so we have an from 14-131, so we have an-
The current motion should be the approval of 14-131, correct?
That's correct. It's 14-131. So, the current motion would be 14-131, as amended, removing the dates of the 21st and the 22nd. That's what's on the table at the current time. Okay? Would anybody from the audience care to speak to that? When we've amended motions, we let people come and speak to it. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back. Are we clear on what we're talking about here? Okay. I'll ask Clark to take the roll call vote.
I need a motion.
So, moved.
Second.
Oh, we did that before.
Okay. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie, 7.
Okay, now we have a second motion, which we're taking a look at, as I understand it from Mr. Clark, which would be to essentially lay over the dates of the 21st and the 22nd until a particular date.
The motion right now is to approve or not. Somebody can choose to lay it over, but the motion right now is to approve the 21st and 22nd or not. I didn't make a separate motion to lay it over. That would have to be a second, a separate motion by somebody.
Okay, second motion then. The motion we'll take a look at now is to vote on the 21st and the 22nd, to approve the 21st and the 22nd.
I'm, I'm open-
We'll show then a second on that.
I, well, the motion's already made.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
All right, then. Excuse me, I would move to lay this over to the next council meeting, with direction to Waterfest, to work out the parking logistics with the hotel and convention center, as well as the public safety of Oshkosh, but police and fire, so to speak.
Do we have an issue there with when the Special Events Committee's gonna work in with the timeframe? Is that sufficient time? I'm just trying to check on the timing here, Mr. Peck, whether that's reasonable timeframe or not, or whether we need a month.
The Special Event Committee would not normally meet until the 10th, but I don't know that that committee needs to take-
I don't think it needs to be the committee itself, but I think-
Is two weeks a reasonable, all I'm asking is, two weeks a reasonable timeframe, just to-
I think Waterfest will be sufficiently motivated to meet in the next two weeks. And Mr. Batley indicated he'd be willing to work. He didn't think it was necessary to lay over. I totally understand, I'm not even gonna argue with you that you wanna lay it over. Mr. Batley will work with them, and I think he'll appreciate that you care that much.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that's fine then.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's just, I think everybody's a gentleman in this. I'm not saying I don't trust anyone, but what I would like to do is, as Ms. Allison Osby stated, is I'd just like to get a little more meat on the bone, so to speak, before we go forward with it.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to lay over until the next council meeting, the issues of the 21st and the 22nd. Any further discussion? See, anybody from the audience care to comment on that? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll ask Clark to take the roll call vote for the layover to the next council meeting on the issue regarding the 21st and 22nd.
Fitzgerald?
No.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Tower?
No.
Carrie, 5-2.
Okay. Then we move on to new ordinances. New ordinances require readings at two different meetings. So, each of these will be read at this particular meeting, and then at the next meeting, they will be read again, and the council will vote on at the next meeting. So, there will not be a council vote on these issues tonight. However, as I read each one of these, if you care to comment on it tonight, you're free to comment it on tonight and comment it on at the next meeting. Okay, so the first one is Ordinance 14-137, "Approve Request to Attach to the City from Town of Algoma, Route 20, 20th Avenue, Voluntary Attachment, 3300 Block of West 20th Avenue." Yes.
Chat Wiesenberg, 3265 Casey Trail. I'm just here to support that resolution and answer any questions the council might have.
Question? Questions at this point? I see none at this point. I trust we'll see you at the next meeting also. Anybody else care to comment on it, one way or another? Okay, if not, then I'll move to Ordinance 14-138, "Amend Special Events Ordinants Pertaining to Grounds for Denials of Permits Recommended by the Special Events Review Committee." Anybody care to comment on that, who's here tonight? Okay, then we move to Ordinance 14-139, "Amend City Ordinances Pertaining to Bowhunting Within the City." Anybody care to comment on that? Seeing no one coming forward, we will move on. Keep it in mind that each one of the last three ordinances that I have read here will be voted on at the next meeting. There will be additional opportunity at that meeting to comment on any one of us, should you desire to do so. Okay, that takes us to new resolutions. We'll go through these one at a time. If you'd like to comment on it, as I read a particular resolution, please come forward and provide us with your comments. Resolution 14-140, "Approve Professional Service Agreement with Explore Solutions to Undertake Aerospace Cluster Study for Aviation Business Park."
Elizabeth Hartman, CEO of Champco, 43 East 7th Avenue. Good evening. I just wanted to make some supportive comments about this resolution, as well as provide a little bit of background. As you know, Champco's been working for quite some time on developing an aviation business cluster here in our community, and really, the first step of that was getting land. And now, you know, thanks to the city and the county, we have land. But now, how do we fill it? And, you know, during the last year, we became aware of consultants that specialize particularly in developing aviation parks and clusters. And, as you may know, we were fortunate enough to be the recipient of a grant from the Department of Defense, and this was one of the projects they chose. I mean, we put a number of projects on the table, and the Department of Defense chose the ones that they thought were the best. To help us diversify our economy was one of the main objectives. And so, they really liked this project. So, the objective here is to hire a consultant that specializes in development of aviation clusters and business parks to help us fill our business park. And this particular consultant has a really very cool way that they go about their process. They take a look at the strengths and weaknesses of your community and your region, and they go out and they talk to their contacts in the aerospace industry, and these folks are incredibly well-connected. If you, if you look at the resumes of all the folks that are involved with Explore Solutions, they have very great credentials and connections in all sectors of aviation and aerospace. So, these folks reach out to their contacts, and they find out what some of the emerging trends and issues are in aviation and aerospace, and they help to match the strengths and weaknesses of your particular community and region with those issues or opportunities that exist in that industry. So, we're not just, you know, throwing darts out there and hoping, you know, something makes sense for us. We're, you know, taking a really strong, close look at what makes the most sense. Because aerospace itself, yes, it's an industry, and it is a focus, but that in itself is very broad. So, we need to understand what makes the most sense for us. So, that's why, you know, we, you know, we forwarded to the Department of Defense the idea of hiring this consultant. They have provided 90% of the funding to hire this consultant, and it's something that, you know, Champco is extremely supportive of and are hoping that you will approve tonight. And I'm willing to take any questions. Melissa Hunt and I are co-chairs of the Subcommittee for the DOD Grant on this particular project.
Questions by councilmen?
I just got one. Elizabeth, you mentioned that the grant's paying 90% of the cost. Is Wouldnewell County putting any money into this cluster study at all?
The county is not, the city was the grant recipient, and that was really a discussion that was had with the Department of Defense at the time. They felt like the city was the best recipient of this particular grant. And the matching, the local match of the 10% is being provided through staff services, so it's an in-kind match, so there is not a cash outlay on the city's part.
Okay, thank you.
It looked like Ms. Hunt may have something to contribute as well.
The only thing I would add is that-
Welcome back to town.
Thank you.
Why don't you tell us again who you are and give us an address?
Melissa Hunt, the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Regional Representative, 150 North Campbell Road. And WEDC is happy to be a partner on this project. This is really a regional initiative where Oshkosh has stepped up to the plate as the city to be the, kind of, the champion, specifically on this portion of the grant. WEDC, again, is co-chairing along with Elizabeth and Champco. And if there are any other questions, this does not necessarily conflict, it actually exceeds, and is very supportive of the work that the state is doing in regards to our development on this cluster, so.
Other questions, comments?
One more.
Sure, go right ahead.
Elizabeth, when we get the study back, does it have a marketing plan to it right away? Or just identifying that maybe we're looking for entrepreneurs? We're looking for more like Basler Aviation, et cetera?
That's a great question, and part of the methodology of this particular consultant is, when they reach out to their contacts in the industry, they try to really identify potential folks who might indeed want to be part of a niche or a cluster that would be created around a particular, you know, business issue or business sector or business opportunity. And they bring those folks to the table. So, you kind of already have built-in prospects as a result. And there will be a marketing aspect to the study as well, but there may be some additional local work that we wanna do on marketing as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald, your comment?
I had a chance to talk to Mr. Davis about this grant today. I was at first alarmed. I thought this is an extraordinarily high cost for a study, and I think many of us that have been involved in hiring consultants for studies would recognize this is on the high end. I know, I did talk with Ms. Hunt on the way up here today. Mentioned to her that I spoke to her colleagues in Madison about the aviation cluster report that Wisconsin Economic Development Corp. did last year. They did that at a much lower cost, but that was really an intelligence gathering. I get the impression this is more than just intelligence, but it sounds like they're intending to bring some, I guess, some collateral to the table. Mr. Davis had indicated there's, I guess I used the word guarantee in our conversation today, but there's going to be some promises of at least bringing people to the community, perspectives, either investors or suitors. I mean, there's no guarantees in terms of how many businesses they can bring, but this cost certainly, it sounds like it's accommodating more than just intelligence.
Yeah, absolutely. They do form a management steering committee, and that encompasses folks from the community as well as people from the industry. And those people from the industry really, you know, they get to have an opportunity to help develop a niche that will help them in their business. So, they are already kind of invested in the development of the cluster. And this particular company, Explore Solutions, you know, they helped Marquette, Michigan, when Sawyer Air Force Base closed, and they helped them develop a niche around recycling of aircraft parts. And they've been extremely successful, and they brought lots of folks to the table. And it really does go beyond just intelligence gathering. There's a lot of work that these guys do, and it's a 16-month grant period. So, when you look at the length of time, and frankly, you know, some of the other proposals we got were higher than this particular, the cost of this particular proposal, with far less experience and contacts in the aerospace industry.
Are there any firm expectations that the Subcommittee has as far as the deliverables that will be received after?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the Department of Defense required us as part of the grant process to outline specific deliverables associated with this project. So, there are. We have, you know, we have a proposal that was approved that has particular deliverables associated with it.
In what, I mean, in what, just as-
Well, I'd probably have to pull up the grant to tell you exactly.
I'm not looking for specifics, but I mean, as far as, is it numbers of, I mean, what, just in general, what kind of metrics?
Well, it would be, you know, delivering this report to the consultant, which would include, you know, particular items. And those items were what we put in the RFP to ensure that what we got back from the consultants was going to meet the conditions of the grant.
I asked a similar question of Alan, so maybe Alan could-
Okay.
Hopefully, I prepped him for your question, so hopefully he'll have an answer. And it better be the same answer he gave me.
Let me know.
There's no guarantees. The consultant is promising 20 to 30 businesses will actually come to Oshkosh at their invitation to go over the prospectus for a future market niche. That's what they're, that's my minimum expectations when it comes to what they're gonna be able to deliver as part of the project. There will be documents and reports and studies that we can reduce to paper, but the key is that they'll actually be able to deliver 20 to 30 existing businesses in the aviation cluster that would have an interest in coming to Oshkosh, that would lead to the niche that we're seeking for Whitton Field.
One of the things that Alan pointed out to me was that the aviation industry is so broad. The purpose of this is to really hone in on specific sectors within the aviation industry, to target more effectively based on our strengths and weaknesses. For example, with Sawyer, up in Sawyer Air Force Base, it was recycling of aircraft parts. That was because that's what meant, that's what was the strength up there, probably because it's so cold up there, it's preserved better. I don't know. But we certainly have other strengths that I think with EAA and with Basler and Orion and the other fixed-based operations, what types of advantages we would offer. And that was the other thing that I took from Mr. Davis, that it's really getting more specific about, you know, there's sick codes, I believe, with all these industries. You're getting into more detailed areas, and then they're gonna deliver different businesses that will come in to look at Oshkosh and see what we have to offer. So, that's, those are my expectations out of it as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Davis.
And I could maybe add one other, just piece, there are two pieces to that. As kind of a third, neutral third party at the state level, we did our due diligence in regards to this entity, so we're very excited to have this as a partnership. The second piece would be, we see this as a very important piece of the initiative where the grant itself is kind of broken up into three to six different parts, and this is just one piece that's really important to the success, not only here in the community, but in all of Wisconsin, so, thank you.
Questions, comments?
Well, just as someone who's been involved in the airport for 12 years on the Winnebago County Board and now three years on this, it's, I can, I've checked out, I've looked into Explorer, I can vouch for them, and we have made many, many runs of trying to do things at the airport, and it never came through to fruition. This is something that is definitely, as has been mentioned today, is targeted. There are deliverables, there's 20 to 30 potential businesses that will be brought to Oshkosh, so this is, this is a great opportunity for Oshkosh to get something, and, okay, everybody, grown alert, get something off the ground. I warned you.
Any other comments?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, I'll bring it up here for a motion, a second, Resolution 14-140.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, let's take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-140.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Okay, it takes us to Resolution 14-141, approve Middle Village Neighborhood Plan. Will I come forward and speak to this?
Dory Willner, Habitat for Humanity of Oshkosh, 1640 South Coler Road here in Oshkosh, and I just want to speak on behalf of Habitat for Humanity in support of the Middle Village Neighborhood Association Plan. As an affordable housing provider here in the city, we're very invested in the vitality and health of the neighborhoods in the community, and we applaud Liz Williams with the City Planning Department and Lori Palmieri for their collaborative work on developing this plan. It's an excellent plan from our perspective, and we are excited about the opportunity to work with the city and the village, the Middle Village Neighborhood Association, and moving their plan forward and being a part of it in some way. So I just am speaking in support, thank you.
My name is Brad Crook, 622 Frederick Street. I'm a part of the Middle Village Neighborhood Association, and we've been working on this plan for, going on four years. To us, it's huge that things like this are backed and have a unified support because of the neighborhood that we currently have. We're trying to get more of a homeowner base. We understand that there are rentals, it's a college area, but we have been trying very hard to get others involved as far as the community and as far as our Middle Village neighborhood. A lot of the neighbors have gotten involved and have had their opinions involved in this, and to us, it's not only just something that's going to make our neighborhood better, but we're hoping that the rest of the city can kind of take notes and see what can be done in a neighborhood that may be lacking or maybe just needs some improvements. Liz has been working tirelessly along with Lori, like was mentioned, but we think it's important that everybody gets a say in what goes on in their neighborhood, not just what everybody else thinks they need, but what everybody thinks that is helpful for everybody in the neighborhood. So coming forward to you guys with this plan that we have worked on for a very long time in a neighborhood that sorely needs it, now we're getting the roadwork done, street safety, working on having areas for kids to play in, not just having to cross Jackson Street to go find a park or going, you know, three miles down the road. Times have changed as things go on and demographics change, but we also want people to recognize that they're also capable of doing the same things. We want this to go forward, we also want to make sure that it's sustained, that its neighborhood's sustained, that we're not just looking for backing all the time from, for city money and stuff like that, but it's important to get this going with you guys, with you guys to back it and to make sure that we have a decent flow of exactly what we need to do, and I think, like I said, Liz gets a lot of credit, and there's a couple other people that are no longer with us, a part of the organization, but I just want to give a big hand to Tony, everybody that's been a part of it, and also to you guys for taking the time to listen. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your comments.
Tony Palmieri, 1212 West Parkway Avenue. I've been living in this neighborhood for 17 years now, so feel a great personal investment in it. What seemed to happen is by the late 2000s, we became concerned with safety issues, and Neighborhood Watch was developed, and Neighborhood Watch is fine. I think it's a great thing to have in a community, but what we did discover by the early 2000s is that Neighborhood Watch by itself, while it can make people feel safe, it really doesn't do enough to draw people into your neighborhood. We thought that the safety priority needed to be complemented by things like public infrastructure developments, housing, and things of that nature. So, and that's when we thought we needed a plan and a vision, and as Brad and Dory have already said, the city planning staff has just been great at working with us and coming up with that plan. What I want to call your attention to, as Brad suggested, is that this plan is resident-led, and we think that that's very significant and very important, that if this works, this really could be a role model for other challenged, for lack of a better word, areas of the city. Because this neighborhood has so much going for it, we're walking distance to so many great assets in Oshkosh, the university, the Grand Opera House, the public library, the Leech, the Riverwalk, we're even walking distance, biking distance to Menominee Park. It really is a great inner-city neighborhood that needs to become a neighborhood of choice, a place where people really do want to reside. We're not sure if this plan will guarantee that it will happen, but we do feel that without this plan, it'll just be that much more of a struggle to maintain the momentum that we've had, so we hope that you can all support this plan tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Janine Wright, 622 Central Street. We moved into our house in 1993, and so we've seen a lot of changes. We saw the railroad track come out of Division Street, and we saw the city raise all the houses on Division and build the townhouses, and then it almost seemed like there was a stall, and we didn't have a whole lot of improvement in the neighborhood, and it can, you can tell when you drive down Central Street today. I think this plan, though, as Tony said and Brad said, includes the neighbors and the neighborhood, along with the city and other partners, to improve the neighborhood. It gives us a little bit of traction. Similar to a business plan, we get to look back every year and see if we're on track. It gives us some milestones to work towards and some goals, and hopefully, good partnership with the city, so I hope you all approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I'll ask for a motion, second, on Resolution 14-141.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Comments by council members? Mr. Cummings, you've been part of this, I know.
I've been part of this. Most of you know, I grew up in what is now called Middle Village, and for those who don't know the boundaries, it's Irving to Church and Division to Franklin. So I've been very, this is kind of an emotional thing, seeing what's happened in the neighborhood where I grew up in. A little bit of history, our family moved there in the early 1950s. At that time, it was all virtually single-family, there were a lot of large duplexes that were It was a great place to grow up. I still get together with some of the guys I hung around with, and we get together for coffee, talk about growing up in that area. Over time, you know, I moved on, over time I saw what the owner-occupied duplexes become rentals and slowly deteriorate. I saw families moving out, I saw the rentals coming in. My mother lived there for 40 years, and to show you the impact that a deteriorating neighborhood can have on an elderly person, it got to a point, 20-some years ago, my sister and I told my mother she's moved. We felt very uncomfortable with her in that neighborhood, she felt unsafe, we found an apartment for her, we moved her, and we virtually gave the house away. So the home was fully paid for, and she just said, I want out of here, sell it for what we can get for the house. And I think that happens to a lot of elderly people, their life savings is in their home, it comes time when they do have to move on, and they're in a position that they, they've lost a lot of the equity in the home they have. So this has been a great example of the partnership between the neighbors, and the neighbors are making this happen. City staff, you know, Elizabeth Williams, Ben Cruminar, I think Darren, you were involved, David Buck, this has been gratifying for me to see, and as I said, had this plan been in place 20-some years ago, my mother still would be in her house. So I applaud everyone involved, this has been a lot of hard work, and I think as this concept spreads throughout the city, we're going to see people's investments in their homes maintained, if not enhanced. So thank you, everyone, for kind of bringing my neighborhood back to life.
Any other comments? Yes?
This is one of those priorities that we had talked about in the strategic plan as a foundation of building a sense of community, and it's always important to see neighbors get involved with neighbors and build that sense of community around themselves, and then partner with the city in a process that provides tangible results and also provides a roadmap for us to follow. Not all of us will be here forever, and it's good to see that we can put something in writing that will last longer than we do, so that these plans and the honest assessment in this plan of your own community provides the framework for success. And so I want to thank all the community members and the staff who have put in a lot of time in this. I think this will be the first of many that we will see in the community, and I appreciate the time and effort that the citizens have put in, in particular, because you all have lots of other things on your plate as well, and the fact that you made this a priority speaks volumes to your commitment to your community and to the city of Oshkosh as a whole, because with this being the first one, it's the one that takes the most work. Now everyone else has a roadmap to follow because you've done part of the hard work. So I want to thank you for that investment in time for all the future neighborhood associations that develop around your plan. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Allison Osby?
Yes, I would like to certainly thank those that came and spoke today. I would like to concur with all the comments that have been made. I remember having a discussion with Lori Palmieri when she was Lori Hoover in regards to this, and anybody that knows Lori, she is tenacious, and I wish I could take her, and I wish I could pluck her out of Middle Village, and I wish I could pop her into another area of the city and let her fix that, along with the cooperation of the other folks in that area. Yes, I am a fan of Ms. Lori Palmieri. She is assertive and she is aggressive, very determined, but always highly ethical, and also very unique in her approach, that she's always willing to listen to both sides, and I think that, it's not just Lori, I think it's the entire community there. I really have hopes that this will succeed, and in fact, I would bet it, between, you know, the cooperation between them and the city and the fact that, again, it's resident-led, I think that's a perfect recipe for success. So thank you to the folks for putting your time and effort, and as Mr. Clark said, it's not as if this is the only thing that you've had going on, you all have lives as well. So I'm looking forward to seeing this throughout other areas of our city.
Comments?
You know, a lot of things have been said before, and again, I mean, I'm not going to repeat a lot, I'm not going to repeat what's already been said, but one thing that all of this proved is, is that there's a passion. There's a passion for the city of Oshkosh, there's a passion for this neighborhood, and if you don't have a passion for whatever it is that you truly want to do, it's not going to get done. So I applaud this group, the city staff, for having the passion to bring this forward. We're going to see this more, and from the littlest successes, great things will grow, and I'm looking forward to this. Thank you very much for believing in your city and in what it can be, not what it has been.
Anything else? Okay, if not, just a couple of comments to finish up here. I think one thing that hasn't been mentioned is just how comprehensive this plan is. A lot of people are saying, thank you, and if you haven't seen the plan, you can't fully appreciate everything that's going into it. As was mentioned before, neighborhoods are important, you know, strategic objective for us, but it's one thing to say you have an objective, it's another thing to bring about execution, and there have been a lot of people that have been involved in the execution of a plan that can be followed well and executed out. So I think the execution will be there, and that's what's going to differentiate that. Other neighborhoods are interested, get a copy of the plan, because it is comprehensive, it's not a page outline of a few ideas, it is highly comprehensive. Took a lot of people, again, thanks to those people, the association, to the individuals involved, to the city staff. Mr. Cummings has worked, I know, particularly hard with that also, so thanks to all. I think there's a model here, and I think it's probably time for a vote.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Okay, Resolution 14-142, approve dissolving TID number eight, South Aviation Park. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one coming forward, I will bring it back to the council for a motion, a second, on Resolution 14-142.
Still moved. Second.
Okay, comments on it?
Can I just have a question?
Sure.
For Mr. Roloff, just for those that might be watching on TV, on the radio, what is TID number eight, South Aviation, what part of the city is that?
That's an area immediately west of Oregon Street, and it goes down as far as Ripple Row, the aviation business park that the newest TIF is immediately across the street, so this is immediately north of that. It's an area that was, how old is that TIF, Alan, would you say, about 20 years old?
Yes. Don't remember the date exactly when it was created, but it was early 90s, if I recall.
So it's 20 years old, and it's immediately north of Ripple Row and west of Oregon Street.
Okay. And just one further question, Mr. Davis, is it being closed because of timeline or because we have all the lots and everything done that we, to why we put, the city years ago, put it as it did?
I'm happy to report that the city made all the improvements we set in the tax increment finance district plan back in 91.
Okay.
And those improvements have been paid off, so the city's been made whole, and now that there's, we've reached the point where we're actually required to dissolve the TIF because we've made all those improvements and paid all the costs associated with that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, just a question, because a lot of people don't understand TIFs and TIDs and all those things. As a result of closing this, we haven't had an opportunity to close a lot, but we will over the next couple of years, what does that mean to whom, and what kinds of dollars does it mean to whom potentially?
May I take that?
I can start off.
In general, because I think the benefits are going to flow from this to a number of folks.
Yes, the immediate benefit is that that tax base will go to all the taxing jurisdictions now that we've paid off the city's debt, so the city, the county, the school district, and the VTE will now have that increment and new growth that had been captured by the city. It'll all be spread amongst all the taxing jurisdictions, so that'll help them in managing their finances for the future. It'll certainly help the city when it comes to increasing our tax base, and our, of course, the fundamental point is it's added a lot of jobs on the south side of town, a lot of well-paying jobs, so there's even ripple effects beyond just the immediate tax base benefit that goes to all the taxing jurisdictions. Let's see, for the city, there's, and the other taxing jurisdictions, in this particular case, there's some residual funds left over in TID number eight. After the auditors get done with that analysis later this year, we'll actually be sending a check out to the other taxing jurisdictions that they can use at their discretion, and I'll make my pitch for the city's share of that balance, that's the, we kind of have that programmed in the budget for adding to our economic development revolving loan fund. So eventually, those funds that are the cash balance can go to the economic development future in the city as well.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, what people like to raise? If not, I'll ask, clerk, take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-142.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Okay, it takes us to Resolution 14-143, approve healthy neighborhood initiative funding through TID number nine. Anybody like to come forward, speak to that? If not, bring it back to the council for a motion, a second.
Still moved. Second.
Okay, discussion. I see Mr. Davis is up there to answer some questions for folks.
Mr. Davis, what does this do for the city?
The city has an opportunity to collect one more year's worth of tax increment from TID number nine. That'll total about $900,000. By state statute, we can spend that on housing, affordable housing in the city of Oshkosh. We have plans to program that. Similar to Middle Village, there's a lot of activities, both housing and public works, public improvements related, that we'd like to accomplish in some of our neighborhoods. This is the kind of source of funds that help implement these neighborhood plans and help neighborhood associations and build the neighborhoods back to where we'd like to see them. So it's critical for the city to have these funds available so that we can then revolve them throughout the rest of the city as time goes by.
And in doing that, we are maintaining and enhancing the equities of these neighbors, neighborhoods that we're going to be investing these funds in, correct? So we are basically, by using these funds, we're going to be increasing our tax bases.
Absolutely, that's the whole design of the program, is to increase values in these neighborhoods and preserve the equity that they have available in their homes and increase their net worth and the city in general's net worth.
Other questions?
Same question I asked for number eight. Number nine is?
This is the Washburn, this goes from, I think it's Wauka, South Washburn, along the highway, US Highway 41 down to Plainview.
Okay. All right, very good.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-143.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Takes us to Resolution 14-144, approve budget adjustment for community development. Anybody like to come forward? Mr. Davis, don't go too far. I see no one coming forward, so we'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
Still moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Mr. Cummings?
Mr. Davis, please explain what we're doing.
What we're proposing is a budget adjustment that would allow the city to create three economic development positions. That's existing resources that the city already has. We'd be reallocating those resources so that we could provide the personnel to accomplish some of the goals that we have under our economic development, both in the strategic plan and our comprehensive plan, and the direction to the city manager to create a centralized or unified economic development effort in the city.
Thank you.
And this is part of our, the Prager Study, which focused on public-private partnerships in The Prager Study, which focused on public-private partnerships in economic development. We are now putting in place the public portion of that by doing this.
We believe we'll have a much stronger public partnership role to play based on what we're doing with the reallocation of these resources.
And we're basically going to be using this to target market Oshkosh rather than what's been done in the past, is kind of just throwing things out there, as Ms. Hartman said earlier, throwing darts out there. We're going to be starting to use a rifle to actually specifically target individuals and businesses to come to Oshkosh.
Correct. And of course, we'll do what we can to cultivate the existing businesses that are already in Oshkosh, do a better job at that from at least the city's perspective.
Right, because after all, 85% of economic development is retention and expansion of your current businesses. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, speaking of retention, and you're right, that is the primary goal of economic development. I shouldn't say primary goal, but it's a majority of focus and effort. But I talked to you about this earlier. How is retention going to be done under the model that's being proposed here?
There's going to be multiple staff that's going to be able to do the retention visits that we'll want to do throughout the year. I expect we're going to be able to do 150 or so of those business retention calls. We want to start them off as relationship building. We have a lot of good things to talk about with the city of Oshkosh. And I think there's a lot of ways that we can help businesses that they might not be aware of at this point in time. We also want to get a little information from the businesses as to what we can help them with in their future endeavors, making sure they grow in Oshkosh. And the sooner we can identify that with the businesses, the better we can react and make plans that accommodate both our needs.
And just as a follow-up, I guess I've had issues, and I think people, if they've read our publication, have known that I have issues philosophically with municipality doing economic development from the standpoint that it's difficult to protect certain confidential information using the state open records law because there's no provisions to account for that. Business retention and in many of the respects that it's done, and I've been a part of being visited by folks in business retention and being a part of business retention visits, you're asking for sales data, you're asking for hiring data, you're asking for prospective capital investment data. I know in this kind of a... In that kind of a circumstance, I'd be less likely, less willing to host such a meeting and divulge such data. My understanding is that this is going to be a less of a data-driven effort and more of a relationship-driven effort.
Absolutely. While the information would be useful, helpful for the city, it's not our primary goal. We do want to develop relationships with the businesses that we have so that we can better help them succeed here in Oshkosh and grow. We don't necessarily need to know all the financial data, and we wouldn't be seeking that out at this point.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Allison Osby.
You know, I think there's a couple. I think Sean and I same, share same of the... Some of the same philosophical ideals in respect to that. And I think, you know, this is just part of the process. It doesn't mean we're done. It's just a significant part of our process and progress moving forward. We obviously are going to need to still look to have that public-private relationship. And a couple of comments is obviously this is something we've been driving towards, you know, for well over two years. It's been well over 25 months. But I think we also have to acknowledge, you know, while I support it, and I do believe it's the best thing going forward, you know, this particular resolution does come with some sacrifices, and one of those being, you know, our relationship with CHAMCO. There has been a phenomenal relationship between the city and CHAMCO. CHAMCO, their board, their executive director were the very first ones to come on the scene. And I remember the article specifically in which Mr. Peck and I were quoted after the council had made the decision to give Mr. Roloff this objective to reassess what's going on in Oshkosh for economic development. And CHAMCO, their board and their executive director, as I mentioned, was the first on the scene to support the city's initiative. And they have done nothing but obviously foster a number of phenomenal relationships. Part of the DOD grant was obviously work that was done between, you know, you, Ms. Hartman, and there was obviously a number of people involved in that. For me personally, this is difficult to see somebody that we've partnered with and have to cut the funding. Unfortunately, we're not in a budget scenario in which we have a surplus to work with and to add these positions. So, we have to make cuts somewhere. As I've said to Mark many, many times, and I've said to you, Mr. Davis, just because it's the right thing to do doesn't necessarily make it feel good. You know, and even this evening, you know, we watch how... We have a partner here that works with WEDC. You know, we've watched WEDC come along, and you know, and I... That's been great for the state and certainly a great partnership with us as well. A lot of collaboration, and I certainly would like to say that I don't think in any way, shape, or form, I don't want CHAMCO and that organization to perceive this as something because there was anything that was not done, but is more is almost kind of a half to an order to get to that end goal. And I would like to make sure that while I support this resolution, that, you know, I would hope that we would be, whether it's city staff or whether it would be the council, that we would be open to however this relationship may change or evolve, that the door will always be open for consideration of how this relationship works between us and the entity of CHAMCO.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to sound like a broken record after a while, but having lived here all my life, and I've seen what has disappeared in the last 10, 15 years. Leach is gone, Radford gone, Morgan Company is gone, Oshkosh by gosh, Oshkosh Tool. It goes on and on. What I used to call acts over my dad worked, and most of my friends' dads worked, went from 1,200 or 1,300 employees down to maybe 50 now. Those were high-paying jobs with very sustainable benefit packages. Nothing's replaced them. In the last year or so, Ms. Allison Osby and I have visited some of the manufacturers. That's the first time they've seen anybody showing interest. I've gone out and visited, done plant tours. They've never seen anybody. I was the first person to do that. It's like there is some interest, both from the council that, you know, to find out about these businesses. Comment about, you know, financial information and so forth, it depends on the structure of the company. Big corporations not can give you anything. It's up to a private company if they want to, fine. If they don't, that's fine, too. I think what we're trying to do here with business retention is showing that we care. I mean, we're here to help you grow and prosper. We're helping you to protect your employees' jobs, their homes. I think it's just that I don't think we have to gather a lot of data. I mean, if people want to get it, that's fine. But I think we've got to really focus, and I keep using the word industrial. It's industrial development. We've got how many hundreds of acres of industrial parks? And they're called industrial parks for one reason, it's for industry. It's not for shopping malls, it's not for restaurants, it's not for anything other than industry, high-paying jobs with sustainable benefit packages. So, we just have to get more industry into this community. And I think the aviation industrial park is certainly a very strong targeted approach to begin with. But there's a lot of other industries out there. And again, with the four things we... I've talked about, and I've met with different city managers and companies, is there's four things you're looking for. Land, we all have land, qualified employees, all communities have those, financial assistance, and it's quality of life. And quality of life is perhaps one of the key factors in why people will stay in a community or come to a community. So, I think these positions are very critical to the growth of this community. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Herman?
I'm good. Just one more comment.
Okay.
Again, I appreciate the position that the rest of the council's coming from. And I think ultimately, we all have the same goal. And I know I share the same goal of a unified focus of economic development in the community. And I've been involved with efforts on the chamber board for nine years and through my business to try and unify economic development in the community. I know the history of it going back, and I've heard the history from Bill Free about the start of CHAMCO and going back 45, 50 years, 50 years now. But as I said earlier, I just... I have some philosophical objections to bringing economic development within, you know, within the boundaries of the city and creating that barrier, that frankly, that barrier to confidentiality that businesses that are expanding and businesses that need to reveal some sensitive data are going to be potentially reluctant to do. And just unfortunately, I won't be supporting this today.
One question. Mr. Roloff, to address Councilmember Fitzgerald's concerns, isn't that the private side of this public-private partnership? Go EDC will be still working with us? And how, in a way, how does this affect all our partners? We mentioned CHAMCO, but there's other partners that are part of this.
Sure. I would point out that in the resolution, we do have a clause that says specifically that the city of Oshkosh continue to work with its economic development partners, including but not limited to the Go EDC effort, to engage public and private entities in more effectively delivering economic development services to the Oshkosh community. The Prager Study recommended a public-private partnership, and I still believe very strongly in that. And in speaking with council members individually, I know that to be true. And whether or not you agree with this 100% about bringing some of the staff inside, I think we need to consolidate our resources so that as we move forward with a public-private partnership, which I believe we will eventually do, whether it's Go EDC or some other initiative, that we have our resources in order so that we can more effectively deliver services. We need to know if we are meeting the needs of our businesses in our community. The confidentiality, I believe we can address certainly in the short term, to the degree we don't have a public-private partnership. But I believe in the long term, as Go EDC or something similar matures, I believe we'll be able to address that concern. That has always been out there amongst the business community. But I want to assure the business community that we will work with you to ensure that whatever confidentiality that you need for your economic development needs, we will meet those needs. And a lot of it starts with relationship building, some trust, and we're going to work forward with, look forward to working with the businesses to get that done. So, thank you for everybody bringing up these issues and having some civil debate and disagreement even on the issue, even though the goal from council is very clear, move economic development forward. And I truly believe that this is how we'll get it done.
I'll just make a... Mr. Peck?
I'll defer to Ms. Osby at that, and then I'll take the next one.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
You know, I guess I would ask Mr. Fitzgerald just to reconsider your position on this because again, you know, this one specific resolution isn't the begin-all, end-all. In my humble opinion, I felt like we've been in a black hole for well over two years. We've gotten nowhere fast, and we've had some obstacles, and we've had some challenges to the best of staff's ability as well as the partners who have wanted to partner with us. And again, this is just a... It's kind of stopping the going nowhere fast and actually kind of putting us into somewhat of an overdrive to try to get where we need to go. You know, again, I know when Mr. Peck and I ran and we were going door-to-door getting signatures, a lot of what people had asked us to run on was economic development and bringing sustainable jobs. And meaning by sustainable jobs, things that provide health insurance, pay that people can actually, you know, raise a family on, and all the perks of having a sustainable company come in and employ at that level. So, you know, again, this is just part of the process. We're not done yet. I will be very interested to see, and I think through this and with the support of the business community that we've had and a number of our partners who have looked to us to move forward, you know, we're going to find that private entity. I don't know what form that's going to take, but I think it will reveal itself very quickly, you know, whether that be through Go EDC, whether that go through our other partners that we've worked with. We obviously have people within the community. You know, certainly Alan and his staff has been extremely, my gosh, phenomenal at finding grants. CHAMCO's done a great job of fundraising. There's Angels on the Water. There's a number of things and opportunities. We just need to move ahead. We need to take a position. And I think once we do that, and again, go into overdrive on this, the other things are going to fall into place. And I really, truly believe that and have for well over 25 months. So, you know, that's all I would consider. You know, I think having been a business owner in the private sector, Sean, I get it. I struggle with this every day. I don't necessarily like having government necessarily be in business where there's the private things, as you mentioned, that are obviously very real in the business world. However, you know, I... When I have been elected to vote and sit in this chair, you know, I obviously am doing what the constituents are asking me to do, and therefore, I need to set some of those things aside, and I need to do what's best for the community. Not to say that you're not, Sean, but I get it. But I would ask you to reconsider.
Just one last comment. I'd like to echo what Ms. Allison Osby said about the relationship the city has had with CHAMCO over the years. I mean, when I was on the county board, I did many things with CHAMCO and saw the great things that they did. One little saying or quote that I like to say, like to look at is, "No one can go back and write a new beginning, but beginning today, we can write a new ending." When I ran for this seat three years ago, I talked about economic development. And one of the things I talked about was the disjointedness of our economic development efforts in Oshkosh. Not that anybody wasn't trying, but we were all trying to pursue the same things, and we weren't doing it in a concerted manner and doing it as a team. This is not a takeover by the city of Oshkosh for economic development in the city of Oshkosh. This is the city of Oshkosh being a part, is putting our team, our members of the team in place so that we can develop this team of public-private partnerships to facilitate economic development within this community. So, I wholeheartedly support this. And again, we can't go back and write a new beginning, but beginning today, we can write a new ending. And this ending is going to be something that is going to be fantastic for the city of Oshkosh. No longer are we going to go forward to the past. We're going ahead to the future.
Good. Thank you.
When I stood in front of this council a year ago and asked to be a member of this team, one of the things that I talked about was economic development and being a public servant. If I'm going to truly be a public servant and be a steward of the taxpayers' money, I have to be mindful of how our spending of their money creates results. In my time on council and even prior, the results that I'm seeing aren't moving fast enough for what this community needs. And if I'm going to continue to talk about fiscal responsibility and making sure that we invest in our community, this is a very tough decision. But this is why people have elected the representatives up here to make these tough The accountability in this is important. The fact that we can bring this in-house, we can put tangible measures on the money that we're spending, and we can generate results and continue to develop the private side of this is important. And I think centralizing our support within the city is important to show our partners outside of the public sector that, you know what, we're committed to this and we're willing to make tough decisions to support what it takes to get action. So, I will be supporting this tonight, and I welcome the tough decision because this is one that, if I'm seriously talking about what it means to move Oshkosh forward and to make decisions that have long-lasting implications, this is one of those decisions. Thank you.
Okay. Any else? Okay, a few comments. I might go back to Prager Report and just mention a couple of things, so kind of came from where we were there until we're here now. Prager Report made a couple of important points. One was that there are a lot of very good things going on in the city... going on in the city. There were a lot of organizations that were contributing to it. Not just the city, just not CHAMCO. We've talked about CHAMCO, but there was the Chamber of Commerce, there's the Convention and Bureau, there's the university, there is the tech school. A number of organizations have been doing a number of good things over time. That can't be forgotten. And a lot of those organizations are going to continue to do a lot of good things. There's capable people, and good things have happened in this city. We're not a bad city. We're not without development over time. We've made lots of development. But the issue is also, the Prager Report, and I think it was accurate, and those things that we heard from the business sector pointed out to some deficiencies that we have within the city. And the four basic ones were kind of a lack of focus. These all fit together. A lack of focus on kind of where we're going within the city. A lack of coordination, a lack of a plan, and a lack of resource sharing, effective resource sharing. We weren't very efficient, and because we weren't very efficient, we weren't using our resources in the most effective way, and we only have so much in the way of resources. So, we've tried a number of tents to kind of bring this together. And it's a slow, difficult process to get a number of people who have been doing things, kind of going in some different directions together and all moving in the same direction. That's always a challenge. But the idea here is, is at least maybe to provide, to bring some more resources within the city, within our budget, to help enhance our focus, our coordination, what the city can do, what the city can do with working with others, and also up the level of leadership. I think it's become clear that people are looking for more leadership from the city. First, I wasn't sure that that was true. People were looking for leadership strictly from the private sector, but then I've been interacting with lots of people in the private sector, and typically what comes back is, what are you going to do? What are you going to do in the city? What are you going to do in the council? The individual organizations and individuals, what are you going to do? It's been clear that there's kind of been a looking for somebody to bring a little more coordination to it with a little extra punch. And that's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to bring all economic development in-house. We've talked about bringing some things in-house. We've talked about bringing some things in-house, but we're talking about raising our, you know, what we can do to help others. But it's not all, we're just bringing it in-house. We need the other bodies. I think the organization that was put together, the GoEDC, has moved along more slowly and things. I still think it can perform a number of useful functions that are very important for us to be successful, because the city cannot do this alone. We cannot bring it in-house, and we just don't have the kinds of resources that are available, and we have a lot of other things to do. And there are certain capabilities we don't have. As Mr. Fitzgerald said, there are certain capabilities we don't have that we're going to have to depend on the private sector to help us at the same time. So, hopefully, what we can do, bring people together, bring focus, bring coordination, bring resource sharing, and also up our level of involvement more directly in economic development. This is a citywide thing. So, again, there are lots of organizations out there, done good things. We'll continue to do good things, and we look forward to working with to make good things happen, and hopefully, they'll look forward to working with us and developing the appropriate plans to move us forward, maybe move at a faster level and to a higher level. Those are my comments. I'll ask Clark to take the roll call vote.
Fitzgerald?
No.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie, 6-1.
Okay. That brings us to council discussion, direction of the city manager, and future agenda items. Future agenda items, we have a workshop coming up on April 22nd with NeighborWorks. Do we have any particulars on that?
No, we should have a draft of the agenda and a packet well before the meeting, though. I know the council likes to get that information as part of the packet.
We have a time that this thing may happen even?
Specific time? I believe it's going to be 5:00.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Mr. Roloff, was that correct?
That was my understanding, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to get it on the calendar, so. Anything else you need to know at this time, council members?
Okay.
Okay. Citizen's statements to council. This is a second opportunity. When citizens have the opportunity to come forward, indicate something they're happy about with respect to the city, something they're not unhappy about, please give us your name and address. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Direct your comments to council. No electioneering. Elections will be coming up pretty soon. And please don't speak to anything that was on the agenda tonight.
My name is Patricia Deener. I'd like you all to take a moment. A special friend of mine has passed away this past week, Judge Williams. I used to work with him in his chamber and in his courtroom. And, you know, he did a lot of volunteer for people. He worked with the Boy Scouts and other things that he did. And, you know, he was the type that kind of sat back and didn't want all the recommend, you know, to be known. And I really appreciate all the things he's done and all the work that we've worked together with him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Nelson, 1385 Mason Street. And I realize that this is on the agenda. I'm just making a public statement about it at the end here. It's the Oshkosh Pub Crawl. And I just want to say that I, as a citizen, I don't agree with it. I know I've actually talked with some of the council members before about this issue, and that you don't approve of it, you don't condone it, and that you have maneuvered the whole event itself into a special permits on purpose, and that, you know, that's the best way that you see as controlling the event. I would like to say again, just publicly, that this is, for me personally, and for other people that, you know, that may come up, it's not something that I see is really putting a stamp of approval on our city and something that we can really be proud of. I know that the whole event itself evolves around binge drinking, and I don't see how that kind of drinking is going to be, again, something that, you know, there's a lot of other events that go on in this city, but this is something that I would rather see just not done entirely. I would rather see it just completely done away with in this city. The organizer, I know you, I've talked with some of the council members, that he has not come up with a special permit so far. And again, I'm not trying to be a broken record about something that you may be discussing coming up, but that I would just like to see that everything would be...
I will clarify something. We'll be talking a little bit about it, but it's really not an item on the agenda, so your comment here is okay. And we're not looking to approve or not approve it tonight.
Okay. Okay. And I would just like to say that, if, you know, if there's anything else that the council can do to put the, all the expenses and everything else that would go on with this event, I would ask that they would do that. I know that there's a lot of other companies that benefit from the T-shirts that are made. Like, specifically, I could see what those are and some other ones that have come up just recently. And, I don't know. I just really wanted to say it publicly that this is something that I don't agree with, and I hope the city does everything they can to try and see it taken down. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi. My name is Terry Demler. I live at 1346 Fabbitts. And again, I'd like to talk a little bit about the pub crawl, too. I went on the city and printed off the statements on here. And again, it does say that you don't condone it, but in essence, if we're not making, I listened to you guys talk about all the events that are going on in this city, and the events that are going on here benefit us as the city. And it's like it's a contained event, though. And when you have your police officers and stuff out there, it's more contained, and people can be protected more and things. But when you have the pub crawl, and they're going, young adults and the different ones that are drinking, binge drinking, and they're going down Main Street to all the bars, and they're going on Ohio Street, Wisconsin Street, down Oregon Street, you don't have them contained. And not only for the protection of the property owners of the City of Oshkosh, for the protection of the young adults that are going out and binge drinking. I mean, I looked at the video back in 1990, when we were known for the riot that we had here, and that we were on the Johnny Carson. I mean, pub crawl is growing more and more every year, and I just don't want the City of Oshkosh and all the hard work that we've done to get our name back after that situation for it to get out of hand again. And not only for the safety of the City of Oshkosh and the economics, people aren't going to want to come to the City of Oshkosh if they see that there's safety for their children, that, you know, we open the door again for our name to be not good. And I'm just saying that if you can't even make the organizer of this event accountable to pay that a promoter had to pay, and yet it could open up for the city taxpayers to have to pay, we're not only using the police, the fire department, we're pulling police away from an area, from another part of the city that might need help, to help protect in this area of the pub crawl. And I just ask that you really think about it, and like Mr. Cummings was saying, I've lived here for 58 years, and I understand what he's saying down over in that area of how his mother lived her all those years, but then she felt unsafe. Well, we're up to two pub crawls a year now, from what I understand, when it used to be one. And I just think and ask that you do look at this whole situation with the pub crawl and see if it really, really benefits the City of Oshkosh.
Ma'am, just one thing. The city, all seven of us have looked at this. The city attorney, the chief of police, the city manager, we are all concerned about this. We're doing everything we can. The gentleman that needs to understand and listen to these comments is the person who is organizing this, but claims that he is not. He has a responsibility to the city and to the participants in his non-event event to take responsibility for that. Unfortunately, he is not taking responsibility. Everyone else here is taking responsibility, but the one person that needs to do it is not doing it. All of us hear your complaints. We are doing everything that we possibly can to maintain the order, to maintain and provide for safety during the event, but that one person is key.
One person is running the whole city for pub crawl. Because we're not making him accountable. What are you doing to him?
We have done everything that we have, we have done everything that we possibly can to make him accountable.
Within the law.
Within the laws.
Within the law.
Just let me add something while you're there. It's just not one person. It's also the tavern owners. My hope is, and I've responded, I believe, to, it was pretty clear in terms of, the people you need to be contacting, because we're going to do all we can, are the tavern owners downtown, the bid board downtown, the Chamber of Commerce. These are the people that you need to do, that you need to talk to, because it's a private kind of a sector thing. We do what we can do, because our goal is to make the city as safe as possible, as was indicated. We'll do everything we can also to get the money back, but we have certain legal restrictions. We'll be talking about it, what our attempts will be later.
I'm chomping at the bit, so.
Later. So, we'll talk about what we'll attempt to do, but there are limitations. But if people in the city are unhappy with it, you can't come to council and ask us to do things that we can't necessarily do as a council, you got to step it up with the people who are benefiting from it. And the way to do it is identify those folks and the people. So, it's the downtown business owners, it's the bid board that hasn't taken a stand, that governs downtown businesses. They need to take a stand. The Chamber of Commerce needs to take a stand, and people have to let them know that these things are not good for the city also. We're aware of it. We will continue to do what we can. We're not in, we're in a limited degree of control, as will be said. City manager, we'll talk about it, so you'll follow the discussion in a few minutes. But have any of you talked to any tavern owners? Have you talked to the bid board of directors? Have you talked to the board of directors of the Chamber of Commerce? Those are the folks that you ought to be talking to, because they're the ones that can put pressure on the owners to say, "We're not going to participate," because a number of them already do. Some of them do, some of them don't. But, so, it's the people that benefit, and that's the T-shirt companies that benefit, and the tavern owners. Those are...
Not the citizens.
What?
Not the citizens.
Well, some, there's probably a difference of opinion with some citizens within here, but I think the councils can probably argue where you stand. So, I'll leave it at that. So, I just want to make sure it's just not one, because without the tavern owners, it goes nowhere.
Well, the other thing is, and I did follow, I spoke with Mr. Nelson at length on this, is kind of following up on what the mayor is saying. There's only so much we can do. The citizens of Oshkosh can take back their community, but they have to get involved in taking back their community. As was said, there's only so much that we can do, and we are doing everything within the law to do this. But the citizens also have a responsibility of going out and trying to change this as well.
Look, Derek, if you talk with you and get the names of everyone that we need to...
You go on the internet, you find the Chamber of Commerce, you can find the bid board, all the, you can walk up and down Main Street, talk to the tavern owners. Well, that's the way, that's the way it's got to be done, though.
You know, I will say, though, in regards to the tavern owners, you know, I've had multiple conversations over various issues within the city. You'd be surprised how open and receptive the businesses are to hearing both sides. They do obviously benefit from this, but I will say, we do have very, very good downtown business owners, and they do include tavern owners. They would be very receptive to hearing what you have to say. They may agree, they may not agree with it, but I can tell you, they are most definitely approachable. That's been my experience.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that this is our citizen's statements. And I know, understand that council has a role in that, and I think that we can have our discussion more effectively when the city manager is having his section. But I think it's important to continue to let our citizens have their opportunity to speak, and then when we're talking with the city manager and his announcements, I think we can kind of expound on what the city's role is as a policymaking body. But I think we need to focus on letting our citizens speak.
Somebody says, we can respond to them and tell them what they can do. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else care to come forward? Thank you. Then we'll move on to...
Did you, ma'am, did you want to come forward?
Ashley Barrett, 1810 Taft Avenue. I just want to say, as a student of the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh, that I do not feel proud that this is something that my school is known for. I do not support the pub crawl, and I find it sad that I see the members of the community lock themselves in their homes while this event is taking place. And also, as a server at a local restaurant here, I noticed that our business, our sales are down during this event, and we just accept it as fact that this is the day the pub crawl is taking place, so no one's going to come in. And I feel like it's not just our, it can't be just our business that suffers. It's other businesses in the area that suffer from this event. And to know that the event has not, well, I'm not sure if it has officially been approved or not, but I've been contacted via my school email about pub crawl T-shirts from a company. And I did not sign up for these emails, because I do not support this event. And I didn't appreciate that my email that is meant for my school affairs was given away for something in regards to this event that I do not support, that I would like to see completely gone from this community. So, I just ask that you keep that in mind, just that the whole community suffers from this on an individual level, but our businesses suffer also. And yes, if I would be the only student from UW-Oshkosh to speak out against it, then so be it. But, yeah, that's it.
One voice in the darkness.
Michelle Paplow, 1707 Sheridan Street, UW-Oshkosh alumni. And I know that you said that you're doing what you can to help stop the pub crawl, but then I kind of wonder, and I don't know all the facts, but when does taxpayers' money come in for like the police force or... Or we're cleaning up the aftermath, the vomit, the urine on the walls, urine on cars. This is happening. Police... Unfortunately, I forgot one night when the pub crawl was going on last year. And I drove downtown after I got off work, Main Street. And I had to drive five miles an hour. I was just watching the cops. They weren't even there to like keep any riffraff. They're there to keep people alive. It was like I was... I used to be a nanny. It was like they're helping the three-year-olds cross the street without dying. And us as a community, as a city, to keep them safe on our streets and even to keep people safe as they're driving over there, it's like, what can we do? Can we do more? And I know, and I thank you for your support for this. But what are we really paying for? We expanded Main Street to be more business-friendly. Is property being damaged? I've heard of the big ceramic pots being damaged. Are they tearing down what we just built up? Because that was a big construction project on Main Street is to rebuild it and to make it look nice. And I just see our college students as a valuable asset. And it's like we're destroying that asset and we're making ourselves a joke by letting this kind of stuff go on. Because people come here for college, they party, but then they leave. Because we're not serious. And they're like, "Oh, that's just a party school. It's an empty red solo cup." But the people with the brains and everything, then they go with their resources because that's what it is here. It's a... You know, it becomes a joke if it's just we're number two or number one for the drinking school. And I believe with everything you guys were saying tonight, we're going to get better. We're doing more to develop. And this is just part of it. And if we can do anything more together... And I know that you said that we need to go there. But any more support would be awesome. And I just thank you for this time that we get to actually talk and get to hear what's going on in the city. And, you know, I really like Oshkosh. I'm from Milwaukee. And I like to stick around here. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Sharon Kerner, 709 Merritt. Mine's a little different topic. I want to commend the police department because I live in a neighborhood that was like swallowed up with crime and drug deals and people carousing on the street corners in the summer. And now different people are owning the houses, but they're rental properties. So it's gone from single families to rentals. And I and another person own the only two houses in the block. And I'm hoping the police this summer will do what they did last year, have meetings on doorsteps or areas where there's trouble. Because once they had that one meeting on Bowen Street, people disappeared. They went inside. And one night, I was walking my dog. And the police car made a little noise when the kids were congregating on the corner, and they dispersed. So the kind of activity the police are doing is terrific. And I want to commend them for that, just so you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll come back here. We're back with the city manager announcements and statements. Agreement? You just want to go ahead?
Well, first, I... Mr. Peck could be disappointed because I didn't put it on the agenda. But announcement, State of the City, 6:00 PM next Monday. I know the council knows. But certainly want to make the public aware, doors open at 6:00 PM. State of the City address starts at 6:30. A lot of things that were discussed tonight, the mobile command post, which I think you'd be very interested in. You might want to book that for your front yard sometime soon. But also, the discussion we had about Middle Village and what that represents. Those are the types of things we're going to be talking about Monday. I'm not... I'm going to tease you with that. And just hopefully, more residents will come and hear about some of these ideas we have to take what was already done with Middle Village and go even farther. And that's the whole goal, is to take what we're doing and build upon it. And I think you're going to see that Monday night. Appreciate all the council members participating with their little video vignettes. Mayor, I think you're going to be disappointed you couldn't be part of that. But I think you've got a little video vignette in there.
I got a little one in there. Also, want to remind people to wear their shirts, if they will, on Monday night.
So State of the City, I think I've done a sufficient commercial announcement for that. Second item, agreement for engineering services. It's really for construction materials testing. Over the course of the summer, we have to test various items related to construction. Midwest Engineering Services, we have a contract with them. And I'm providing the council report in accordance with the municipal code. And then, of course, a lot of folks here tonight talking about the pub crawl. Very minor detail, the council isn't approving the event. They're approving a permit to recoup costs for extraordinary services. So one of the residents pointed out the moving police officers from other areas of the city. We continue to maintain services in all sectors of the city. What we do is we have to bring people in on overtime to provide this. And those are the costs that we're trying to recover from that. Because we believe, and I think the council has made very clear, and this has been staff's approach, is that we are going to recover the costs associated with providing extraordinary services. One of the last folks who spoke talked about some of the other impacts. I don't even want to get into the disgusting things you talked, but you mentioned it. Things that are damage to property, let's just leave it at that. A couple of years ago, at this Christine Anne Center, there were some silhouettes that were broken. So it's not... There's a lot of things that can happen. Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to find... To attach those costs to pub crawl. However, if we do catch somebody, certainly, we're going to have them pay those costs. Council's been very clear, they don't endorse the event. The university doesn't endorse the event. For the woman who pointed out that they got their email address, I would suggest that they take it up at the university. I would also suggest that if you feel strongly about the pub crawl, encourage your friends to boycott the event. That's a good way... That's a good, effective way to do it. Don't go to the event. I don't think you folks plan to go. But encourage your friends to do something similar. With regarding the collection of costs, and that's really what we're down to. We're really at a point that we were a couple of years ago, where Mr. Kubiak refused to provide an application. So he hasn't even applied for a permit. So we can't even approve or disapprove a permit because no permit's been requested. I think that's highly irresponsible. Whatever advice he's getting, he's following. And he hasn't returned calls. He's, in my opinion, acting childish. So that's my opinion, and I'm entitled to it. And if I run down to Peabody's, I'm sure he's going to tell me what he thinks of me. And quite frankly, I don't care. With that said, what we did a couple of years ago was we said, "We're going to provide a notice of special charges to each establishment that participates in the pub crawl." I will say that not every tavern participates in pub crawl on Main Street. Some of them exercise certain procedures to keep it out of their establishment. The police department has methods that they will employ to determine who is participating in this event. And we will make note of every one of those businesses. And then they will be forwarded a bill for the extraordinary services if no event is applied for. Special charges need to go to a benefiting property. So we just can't take an individual and say, "You're going to get billed for the event if your property specifically doesn't benefit from that." So we're going to assess those charges to the property owners. Police Chief Groyle has reached out to the tavern league. I think the tavern league is a little frustrated because this is generally not something that they do. This is... They're normally representing all tavern owners. I think they're a little frustrated that this has come to this point. But we're going to have to send a notice of special charge to each of those businesses. Now, before everybody thinks that this is such a terrible bill that is going to break the bar, two points. Number one, the bars have told me formally, informally, however, that the number one and two nights best gross income for their business is pub crawl one and pub crawl two, spring and fall. Our bill for... If we divide it out as we did last time, we estimate it will be approximately $400. So people can talk about how it's going to break the bank. $400 is going to break the bank for their number one and number two best grossing day of the year. And I think it was a very good point that some businesses actually hurt as a result of pub crawl. Very good point. Unfortunately, that's not something we can control. But I think it goes to that issue. So that'll be our intent. If they don't come forward, we're going to come back with a special charge. Meanwhile, Mr. Kubiak, to the degree that he's already established that he has applied for event permits before. So if he refuses to apply for event permit, we have every intention of citing Mr. Kubiak for not acquiring a special event permit. He's already established the precedent that he needed a permit. So the fact that he doesn't get a permit this time means he will be cited. And Chief Groyle intends to provide that citation. And sometimes, Mr. Kubiak chooses to, I will say, take the money and run. He collects money for the T-shirts. There have been times he hasn't even been there the night of the event, just kind of lets things happen. And I was hoping to get a little nod of disappointment, so thank you. We should be disappointed. But we intend to use every ability we have within the law, as the council members point out, to hold the organizers and beneficiaries of this event accountable. Because I think that's what the taxpayers have asked the council to do and what council has asked staff to do. So with that, I'll get off my stump. And sadly, I have to do this once or twice a year. And so there's my semi-annual rant. So thank you.
Other comments?
One comment. Listening to the comments of the citizens that came up, and obviously, they would like us to do more. Legally, we can't stop the event, correct? We can't stop anybody we're going into a tavern, correct?
Correct.
Legally, we can't stop them from even over-serving them, technically. But yet, there are laws against over-serving, aren't there?
There are, yes. It's technically, legally, you probably could. Because there is a law against it. It's very difficult to enforce, as you are well aware.
Well, we're... Correct. So that's our dilemma. We legally can't stop the event because citizens, whether we agree with what they're doing that night or not, have the right to go to a public venue and drink. So our best option at this point is, obviously, go after the people involved in the event to cover our costs for police, fire, and hopefully, not a lot of damage and hopefully, not a lot of garbage and other consequences connected to it. But I would encourage our citizens that are listening that if they have any problems congregating people in front of their house, hears that they're urinating in their bushes, doing other mischievous things, to let the police department know, too. Because not all the police department officers are going to be down on Main Street. They are going to be in the neighborhoods. They are going to be in the areas watching for some of these activities. And they need to know what's going on on side streets and other areas connected to this event. Because that's where a lot of the mischievous criminal activity actually happens, is on the way back to the dorms, on the way back to... And there's not just college students that are involved in this. There are a lot of Oshkosh residents who are in their 20s plus get involved with this event, too. You know, it kind of always gets put on the onus that it's the university. It's the college kids. Well, there's a lot of young adults that live in Oshkosh, too, that participate. So it's Oshkosh residents involved in this event, too. And they need to take some ownership of that, too.
Other comments? Ms. Allison Osby?
Just to piggyback off of what Mr. Herman said. And I wish Chief Groyle was still here. I remember the last two, because one of the things in the way that this event is being promoted is it's growing and growing and growing. But if I remember correctly, and Mr. Roloff, maybe you know, I know that in the citations and the tickets that were written out, I was amazed at the number of people that are not Oshkosh residents that were getting the citations. And I think part of the challenge is they're not from the community. So therefore, anything goes before they leave it. To Mr. Herman's point, yes. I mean, there's definitely Oshkosh people that are participating, most definitely. But I think the growth, though, is coming from outside of our community. Because the participation level, it almost seems to be darn near doubling.
Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Clark?
I just want to thank all of you that took time to come here. Oftentimes, we are the first place people go because we are the most visible organization in terms of what represents the city of Oshkosh. All of us up here represent you. When you come and speak, you're the voice that gets heard. Now, the important part is, we're all listening. But the important part is, now you have a voice. Continue to use that voice. Some of these other councilors have told you where to go. And if Oshkosh wants to be a community, and if we want to continue to talk about what it means to be Oshkosh, we have to set forth a vision for what we want Oshkosh to be. And I think you guys have clearly articulated what we want, what we don't want. And now it's important for us to support you in that. But the citizen... It's your city. Make sure that your voice is heard by anybody who needs to hear it. Your friends, your family. Social media is a powerful tool. Use Facebook, use Twitter. Coordinate your efforts. The more that you speak with one voice, the more you can counter another organization that's speaking with one voice, even though they aren't admitting to speaking with one voice. So it's your community. Take it. We saw with the Middle Village program, what a community can do when they get together and speak with one voice. We can support you in that as much as we can. But the most important part is, continue to speak with one voice. And I'm glad that you're speaking. Thank you very much for your time. And I thank everyone else for letting me get on my soapbox here for a moment.
Thanks, Mr. Clark. Just tie together two things here, one of Mr. Clark's and one of Ms. Allison Osby's. Social media. You can use social media to combat it. But I think that's been one of the big issues. If we didn't have social media, the size of the pub crawl wouldn't be as large as it is. A number of the people out of town... These pub crawls happen in more communities than ours. And there are folks that just go from one community to another. It's kind of one party after another. So social media is a powerful tool in terms of making it happen. And really, I think probably more than half of the people that participate are from outside the community, quite frankly. Because students are limited by age. And I think they're pretty careful at the bars on checking ages those nights. I'm sure it's not 100% or anything like that. But the point is, is there are a lot of people coming from other communities. And social media has become a powerful tool for not-so-good things, as Mr. Clark said. Could become good things, too, as you get out, you know, on your Facebook pages and that kind of stuff, too. So thanks. Thanks for your comments. Thanks for being here. Anybody else want to make a comment?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'll say, Mr. Deputy Mayor, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I do. I move that following adjournment of this meeting that the council convene in the closed session to discuss bargaining strategy, options and parameters related to the negotiation of a development agreement for a possible economic development project proposed for Aviation Plaza, a former Walmart site. South Kohler Street pursuant to Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent C of the Wisconsin State statutes for competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Sir, second.
Second.
Anybody like to comment on it?